...to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. I'd like to announce that there will be a policy and planning meeting following the regular council meeting to discuss the event, venue, drafted ordinance. And we will do that. We will make a game time decision based upon how late in the evening it is, whether we defer that to a later time or we wait to discuss that this evening. So move on to number two, approval of the 10th of agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. Straylin?
Support.
Port Peterson? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call or roll.
Ian Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Bachobin?
Yes.
Randah Horse?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number three, certified list of police officer candidates. Mike, if you'd explain, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to give a board for a brief presentation on this item. And as background on this, this past meeting, we made a 19th civil service commission conducted interviews and performed a comprehensive review of competitive tasking process that we thoroughly, from which we thoroughly vet potential police officer candidates. The candidates passing all phases of the competitive process and satisfying the standards set by the police department and the Civil Service Commission are listed up here on the big board. Now, with this is my understanding approval of this list tonight is the full police chief authority to hire anyone off this list, but it is also. In summary, these were the candidates that passed all phases of the police department's test here and will approve by the full Civil Service Commission. And Chief Okeski, do you have anything to add or fill in the details of any additions?
No, sir.
Good. Thank you. Mike, do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
For?
Randah Horst, or I'm sorry Bachobin and Ski Bow. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call or roll.
Bachobin?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Randah Horse?
Yes.
Ian Straylin?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number four, appointment of Bruce Borgi to the Historic Preservation Commission. I would like to appoint Bruce Borgi to the serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Borgi is a lifelong resident of Pella and graduate of Pella High School. Mr. Borgi holds a BA degree in business management from Central College and has been employed by Pella Corporation for the last 20 years. He currently works in the design assurance at the Test Lab. Prior to joining Pella Corporation, Mr. Borgi spent a dozen years as a businessman owning and operating. The Record Collection Limited, a retail, a retailer of pre-recorded music. Mr. Borgi currently serves as a board member of the Pella Historic Trust, Oakwood Cemetery, and the Friends of the Pella Community Center, and has served on the board of many other nonprofit community organizations in the past. Mr. Borgi has a passion for researching, compiling, and writing about Pella history. He lives with his wife Cindy at 614 Monroe Street. And if approved, Bruce's term would expire on January 1, 2022. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support Randah Horst and Bachobin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call or roll.
Randah Horse?
Yes.
Bachobin?
Yes.
Ian Straylin?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, I'd like to announce that there will be a closed session
pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 388 dot 9 sub 1, to discuss marketing and pricing strategy or proprietary information of the city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such a disclosure. After that one is complete, we will have a second closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21 point 51J, to discuss the purchase or sale of a particular real estate only where the premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body would have to pay for the property or reduce the governmental body would receive for the property. Move on to the public forum. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address the council regarding any agenda items, please step forward, speak into the microphone, give us your name, where you live, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no takers, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Borga?
Support.
Mr. Straylin? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a comment on 2A, since I wasn't here at the last meeting. 2A references the conversation around a proposed study of whether or not parking is needed downtown. I just, I chuckled at that just a little bit after I reread it twice to make sure I wasn't reading something wrong. I just want to make sure that, that we, I mean, I can't believe we re-questioned that. Removing 24 parking spots for those that haven't went down there and counted it is equivalent to one side of the city block. And, and the fact that we would even consider reducing parking spaces by 24 has me pretty concerned. So I would just, we, we have to do us, you know, we have to have parking. And I don't know that a study, spending that kind of money is necessary when we know the obvious answer there. So I just wanted to go on record, making that statement. So thank you.
I think that study is also supposed to give options and recognizations as well, is that not correct?
Yes, Mayor, you are correct. And the reason why we're recommending this study is because the alternatives or the option for additional parking range anywhere, any correct me if I'm wrong, from right around $500,000 to $600,000 for roughly 120 square foot parking lot in county land acquisitions up to $2.5 million for 120 space parking ramp. And so before those types of options and extensive public expenditures were considered, the thought was that we wanted to make sure additional parking was warranted.
And Tony, you make a good point. If anything, that's probably more of a misnomer on the AP, that it's, is it necessary? Absolutely, everybody in the community would agree it's necessary. This is actually a little bit more than that.
Sure. That's fine.
Gives us options and, so.
Just wondering.
But it's a great question. It's a great question. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Clerk call or roll.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Ian Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Bachobin?
Yes.
Randah Horse?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to petitions and communications. Item number one, fiscal year 1920 funding request presentation from the Pella Area Community and Economic Alliance. Mike, if you'd explain, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually turn the floor over to Ms. Karen Hines, Executive Director of the PACE Alliance. And Karen is here to present the PACE Alliance's funding request for our fiscal year 2019, 2020. This would be the fiscal year that we started on July 1, 2019. It is important to note that we will be discussing the PACE Alliance's funding request during the budget work sessions, which are scheduled for next Monday, Tuesday night. Those meetings will start at 6 o'clock and will be in this room as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, for the opportunity to talk a little bit about what PACE has worked on over the past year and what we will continue to work on to 2019, as many of the initiatives that we have undertaken are going to be multi-year. We are in our, just started, our third year of operation as PACE. And really, the strength of the organization comes from these five councils. These five councils represent 155 of our employees in our community, from our members. It represents 122 different businesses. So the power of bringing all of that passion, that knowledge, that expertise together allows us to do a lot of things more niddly than we could if we just had one particular or two particular boards. Those four councils are really focused on four areas, all in an economic development light. Infrastructure, working on and with the city of housing to address needs. Fiber, childcare, which we'll talk about. Talent development, which affects almost every business in our community. Business resources, making sure our existing businesses and those that are looking to start up in our community have what they need. And also place making, making sure our community is a place where people do want to live and is In the infrastructure, really the housing, we have been talking about that since the study came out right around 2016. Our very early conversations spurred a lot of that interest from local builders, from developers, from investors. And we are now seeing, as you are approving some of those plans and site plans, we see that come to fruition. We'll continue working on some of those areas. And I know I use this slide, I use this slide as kind of a barometer to where we are with our goals, really working on this year rental housing. How do we fire that same passion and that same energy around attracting more rentalness to our community? Our housing also is not only focused around creating those partnerships to bring us housing, but we also have a committee that is looking at addressing some of the issues with our employers around commuting. We have a good majority of our workforce that commutes into our county every day. We are looking at other communities as examples, looking at similar programs, similar structures that they have, that they've had success with, that we can utilize here. Right now, one of the suburbs is working on a rental incentive, that assistance incentive program, to encourage those people who now commute to live in the community. Not only good for employers, but good for our tax base as well. It's a concept that was floated out to our larger employers. There was some interest in really formulating what that program would look like. So we'll take that back to them and see if that will address their needs. Obviously, this will take a few years to develop, but at the same time, we need rental housing to develop. So it will be on track with that. It's been a really exciting and gratifying process over the last eight, nine months on the high-speed broadband in the municipal utility. We have been very happy to assist Mike and his team, as well as the city, with really looking at what does our community need, calling on experts from our local companies who have that IT knowledge that make and blend. And I believe you guys will be reviewing that later this month, that culmination of work. You guys have done an excellent job. In just nine short months, we went from an approval to now a business plan for you. So thank you for making that a priority. I know all the citizens, or most of the citizens in Pella, will thank you as well, as well as our employers. We also worked on coal operations around the replacement airport. As you know, this is an imperative amenity, not amenity, a tool for our local employers that are here today, also the ones that will be here tomorrow. We had a public relations effort that we partnered with the Mahaska Community Development Group, really looking at and putting messaging out there around what this means to our area, not just to one or the other respective community. We created a Facebook page, we created a website. We have videos that talk about taxes, jobs, our community. We put three out so far. They have been viewed almost 66,000 times. We have two more that will be released over the next couple of months. We put out a Facebook post of 10 times per month, not only on the airport and its importance, but also what our region is able to compete with and be global. We are looking at celebrating what we do as well. This will also continue, as this is a major need for our employers. We also look at industrial land. We have been looking at this for a while. Where does that make sense? Where can we utilize the infrastructure that's already in the ground? This was a conversation that we started very early on in 2017, using the comprehensive plan as our guide, also looking at other landowners that would be willing to sell. Some of those conversations early on in our Economic Development Council really sparked the interest of companies that are looking to expand, as needs met what they wanted and needed for their expansion. Lally announced right after the first year that they are committed to Pella and will be expanding here. So we have been working with them to locate a piece of land or a site that will work for their needs, based on those early conversations. And we also keep track of our leads that come in. What are companies looking for when they're looking to locate or expand? These were the stats from 2018. They are very similar to what they have been over the past few years. We also use this as we look to the future of what land do we need to have available because of what size companies are looking for. We don't want to have a piece of land ready that's too small. We don't want to maybe retain land that is too large, that will sit idle for a while. The 2018 stats really match in past year's sites. Companies are typically looking for 10 to 15 acres. If they're looking for a building, it's usually between 20 and 60,000 square feet. We also share this with our local builders. We had a couple of buildings that have gone up, that they really wanted to know what companies were looking for, so they weren't building a spec building that was not right sized. They went up and actually they were rented immediately due to several circumstances. We talked about talent development. One of the areas that we are really looking at is childcare. And Tony, to your point, we actually did a study on childcare, knowing what the answer was. We are short of available childcare spaces, but why we needed to do that study was to really learn what type of care was desired from our employees, what our employers were looking to do in the future, and also from our local providers, what their views were. The surveys went out last fall. We wrapped up that portion. We are now onto phase two, which is really diving into that data and creating a strategic plan of how to implement childcare in our community that will meet the needs today and in the future. That final plan should be available at the end of March, pending no more meetings canceled due to weather. Also in the talent development arena, in 2018, we dipped our toe into a new venture, which was virtual career fairs. Just like the career fairs you physically attend, these are done virtually, so you are live chatting with the candidates. We participated in one from Flatbilly, Wisconsin. It's an engineering school that our companies have success in recruiting individuals. We also participated in one out in California for IT engineers. We did have a couple of success stories for people that were hired into our community. And coming up this spring, we will take part in two much larger virtual career fairs, one sponsored by Big Ten schools, one sponsored by Big 12 schools. Those are obviously much closer to home, and we look forward to visiting with all of those new grads that will be looking for careers. We also held focus groups, community conversation, focus groups, really around Pella becoming a welcoming community. We know we need to attract new talent into our area, so we asked our companies to select a focus group of four to five individuals that they felt was a diverse, diverse group for their employee base. We not only looked at companies, we looked at healthcare and schools. So we talked to some groups that were young professionals because they were diverse for their workforce. We talked to a gal, or a group of females because that was diversity in that particular employer's workforce. And then we also talked to Warren Bourne. What we wanted to really have a conversation around was what attracted them to Pella, and what do they define as a sense of community? And do they find that here? And if not, what could we be doing better? So we learned several things. We will continue those conversations in the next year, and we'll talk about some of those, the things that we learned, that we can easily address, things that they maybe miss from where they have lived prior, or things they want to see here, some of which we actually offer here. They just don't know about it. So we need to work on really promoting what we already have here. The other initiative that we kicked off right at the end of the year was the Pella Talent Pipeline. We brought employers, healthcare, we brought education together to really look at the workforce that we have in our own backyard. How can we invent the best opportunities to achieve the most potential? We have four to five groups that are looking at and studying different initiatives for this year. We have a report coming back in October, or in April, excuse me, of what that would look like, what are some of the factors that need to be in place for that to happen, and what challenges would we expect to have to overcome? All around, how to really develop our workforce, whether that is in the early learning years, whether that is K through 8, high school, postgraduate, or even lifelong learning. Business resources, this was really all about and will continue to be about, learning, providing resources, and connecting opportunities for our businesses. And I won't go through all of these, but these were all designed to really give tools to businesses that are existing today, starting up, connections that they need to peer-to-peer, or connections they need to help solve problems. In any given month, the Business Development Council will put on between four and seven different events, all around connecting and learning from each other. And I hope you take a look at your upcoming events for PACE member newsletter that comes out too. And if you'd like, please stop by and look at it. That same group will also be looking at a session or a series, depending on how they break that up, around can your business survive or pass the hit-by-the-bus test? We all know that's a metaphor for some type of event of disruption. We saw a very powerful example of that last summer with the tornado that hit Premier Marshalltown. Some businesses between the communities were equipped to deal with that. Others went out of business. Some are still trying to figure out how to recover. Giving those tools to our businesses will also create value, so when they do want to exit their business, they actually have something that they sell. We all know natural disasters come in many forms, so we want to give them the tools. Along those same lines of giving tools, resources, I have the pleasure of meeting with a lot of entrepreneurs who want to start a business, some that want to expand. And we're very happy to provide those resources, answer questions. But we all know that that doesn't necessarily happen between eight and five. We can look at our Google Analytics and see how many people are on our webpage looking for those resources. So we want to make sure that we have that convenience available to them. We are in the process of interviewing new businesses, those that have been in business between 12 and 18 months, to really learn from them what type of challenges they had. Was it necessarily setting up their business? Was it a regulatory process and they didn't quite know how to navigate? So a lot of that information is driving what our new website will look like. This group, and also the Pella Talent Pipeline, will also be investigating a business incubator here in our community, to really encourage those startups and give them the support that they need very early on, so they can concentrate on getting their business developed instead of having to manage some of those day-to-day administrative functions. The last area we're really concentrating on, place making. So creating the community through events. We have events that we're very familiar with, Thursdays in Pella, holiday season, Fridays on the canal. But we also had an event right after the first of the year, where we invited our members to come in and give us their ideas of things that they would like to see in the community. We had roughly 40 people participate. We got four pages of ideas on what we can add as far as activities or events to the community. So we will be working on what that looks like, how can we implement that, or who can we help or partner with to implement some of those. The other thing that we did learn was a lot of the ideas that were being generated were already being planned or have already taken place or ongoing. So again, a lot of education, which sometimes can be a challenge as people get their information from many different sources. So one of the things that we will be coming, or we will be having on our calendar, is a gathering of all the marketing and communication individuals from the companies, to really put our heads together and figure out how can we continue through their channels or create new channels to reach even more people in our community, to let them know of the wonderful things we have here. Not on the slide, but definitely something that we will also continue to do, is to look at our available buildings in our downtown area, round town, what makes sense to put there. We saw a couple of restaurants that have closed recently. What can we do to replace those? So that will be on our to-do list as well. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of PACE for our partnership over the past. We have really appreciated, and I hope you have and continue to utilize PACE as a resource. We can rally troops if you need expertise in any areas, or if you need backgrounds, or any connections. So again, I want to thank you. We also want to request a continued partnership at the exact same level as the past two years at 30,000. So with that, I would entertain any questions if you have any.
I'd like to. I have a couple, and a couple of comments, if I, if I may. What other levels are there?
We have, we have a 30,000, we have 15,000, a 10,000, a 5,000 and 25,000, and a 550,000.
Would you make those, that information available to us, and what each one of those categories?
Absolutely.
Would enable the community to, what we would give for that money?
Absolutely.
I mean, I have to look at things as, as if I were a business person, because quite frankly, I, I am a business person, and I always look at cost versus reward, results, and, and those kind of things. And as you said, this is our third year now with the PACE group. And again, I'll, I'll go back to the same kind of comments that I've made the last couple of years, and I don't know if the rest of the council will necessarily agree with me or not, but we do great at planning, and we do great at studies, and I, and we do great at looking at things, but we don't do great at actually getting results. I would be really interested in knowing what has PACE done over the last three years that would have not have happened if it weren't for PACE? I understand the housing study, that was done by the county, not by PACE.
I agree on that.
And all of the housing, or so much of the housing and all of those results, the rental units, all the developments, and all those things are all from investors that not necessarily had anything to do with PACE. They've, maybe some, but not all. So, I mean, I'm looking at some of those things and saying, yep, you know what, we do have 19% of our goal for the housing. That's great. But what are those results attributable to PACE? Because you're asking us to spend $30,000 to do that. And from my perspective, I need to look at that and say, are we giving $30,000 worth of benefit to the community? Or would we be better off taking that $30,000, hiring an economic development person within the city and creating our own department that's focused only on the businesses, the open storefronts, the housing needs, all those infrastructure things that quite frankly generate additional tax burdens? And one of the things that you didn't mention up there that has always been, for as long as either PACE or Chamber or Padco were around, the precursors to PACE, has always been the governmental trips, go out to Washington DC to visit with our congressional delegation. We've always had that every year. And the last few years, I've had to chase after you guys in order to get that scheduled. I intentionally did not chase after you this year. So far, now we're into February, still don't have any word on that whatsoever. So I suspect it's probably not going to get done this year.
It's actually in the works.
I'm sorry?
It's actually in the works.
Okay, very good. That's great to hear. When, when we were actually getting it done in March, we were getting notified of that in December. And now it's February.
We are now trying to coordinate that with the Des Moines Partnership.
You're, you're deferring that to the Des Moines Partnership. You're not doing it for the community, you're doing it for the Des Moines Partnership.
No, we try to time it because we do have some members that attend, so we don't have to. to fly down twice.
Okay, very good. I would like to know what we've actually accomplished in our own right, what we're getting for that thirty thousand dollars, and not just plans, and not just forms and processes and procedures that really don't have anything behind them other than to come to the city and say, we developed this great plan, here you go, you guys implemented and paid for it.
I think one of the things we have, the ability to do, and we do very well, is convene, not only our businesses, but to keep the pulse on that. The childcare study that we are doing, we are putting in a strategy, and quite frankly, in order to attract talent, we are going to have to solve that issue. That would not be done if we were not listening to our businesses and trying to solve that. Some of the early conversations that happened in our meetings are conversations that take place because we convene. And that in itself does have value and does have merit.
And don't, please don't miss it, I'm not saying that you don't have any value, that's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying, give me a reason to spend thirty thousand dollars next year, because we've, we've been putting money in this process for years, and now the rubber needs to hit the road, we need to figure out, are we getting what we're paying for? And I'll get off my soapbox.
I'd like to say a few things. Which will mirror a lot of what you're saying, but I would like to go back to slide two if we could, the one on the housing progress. I think it's slide two, or maybe three.
It's a little different number.
Yeah. Because my, my sense, I've been able to represent the city council on these PACE board meetings, and what strikes me with this slide in particular, I think you've gotten to a little bit of a tumor, but what strikes me here is that this slide is on a PACE report, presentation, and if you look at that gray area that has the nineteen percent of the goal of nine hundred and sixty-six units, that gray area signifies significant amount of time and energy and progress in the housing issue on the staff of our city. That, that shows a little bit of what PACE has done. And what really ought to be up there is another, at least one more bullet that, that pinpoints that this work is being done by the city staff, spending countless numbers of hours dealing with major housing developments that PACE has not been involved with for quite some time. Now, that study that you mentioned came out in 2016, I guess, and I guess that timeframe, maybe PACE had some involvement in starting and some inspiration and, but at this point, PACE isn't doing it. I've been on the council for two years now, and what I've seen with this PACE alliance is a lot of paperwork being done. And what I would have thought, since they did the study, pinpointed how much of an issue the housing is for the city, that they would have taken some initiative to go out and do some promoting, go out and talk to developers, go out and seek funding sources or talk to funding sources, and I haven't seen any reporting of that taking place at a PACE board meeting. What I have seen is paper coming through saying, this is what we've been doing, having very little impact on housing progress. Our staff in this city has been working hours, probably overworking in this area.
I would agree with you, Mike works extremely hard and stout. What you don't see are the conversations that we do have with developers. We continue to visit with them, try to garner interest, see what the needed conditions are to make a business plan for them to come in. We are ongoing with those conversations. Now, some of those are confidential, so we don't report those out, but they are a deep place.
Well, Karen, I've been at board meetings where confidential information has not been said, but product, but information has been given that these things are in the works. I have, I have not heard anything about what you're talking about, talking to developers. I'm talking about in one instance, maybe a few instances in businesses. I have never heard any conversation, any reporting on what you've done with these developers that you're talking about. That's all, that's all I'm saying. There has been nothing mentioned in PACE board meetings. Now, if it's happening behind the scenes, why isn't it being reported to the board? Because other things in the business sector have been.
And that's something we can address.
I hope so, that's what I'm, that's the point I'm making.
And that is merely ever report out. I think when we report out from each council, I can have Del Collins, Chair of that, detail that out more.
And I would like to see even more specifically, some type of a strategy developed for some, instead of paperwork, I'd like to see some real hard focus that would, that would put, I don't know if this is well, well described, but boots on the ground, that specific things are being done in order to increase that nineteen percent, because this is going to be, this is forecasted for 2025, that's six years from now. And so I think some real hard work needs to be done on promoting and seeking out, not waiting, as you reported with your last, last infrastructure slide, I think it was, about contacts coming in, leads coming in from the Greater Des Moines Partnership. Because that, that information goes out to communities all over the metro area. We need to be focused on what is Pella doing for Pella, particularly in this issue.
And the results associated with those.
That's your point.
And that's my point. Talk to ten, land in one, that's fine, ten percent. Right now, it's, talk to a bunch.
Or, and besides that, what are they saying that they need? That's what we need as well, because if we're not offering, we're just going to be spinning, and maybe we do need to bring in some expertise to deal with this issue, because I'm not sure, and let me say this again, I'm not sure that we laypeople have economic development skills or knowledge or experience, and I'm willing to admit that. If somebody came to me wanting to know what was available here in Pella, I wouldn't point out and try to influence them to come. I would immediately suggest, unfortunately, Mike, I would immediately suggest, talk to our city administrator, because there's planning, there's zoning, there's infrastructure, there's a whole host of things that, that Mike readily can point to or go to planning and zoning, go to the city staff and get some immediate answers. And I think our, I think our knowledge base, and I'm going to include PACE's, because they're laypeople as well. I don't know any economic development people that are on this council, and so if they come to you, you personally, I don't know how you respond, except maybe going to say, this is what we have available, or do you say, go to the city? Go and talk to the city administrator.
Very well.
Pardon me?
Mike and I actually work really well together on that. He's always there to answer questions if I do need to confirm something, or if it is something that Mike does, does as far as knowledge, that I don't definitely refer.
I have, I have one. One of the concerns that I have, both as a council member and as a business owner, is that I feel that PACE and also in your organizational structure, you have a high concentration primarily to our downtown small businesses, but yet your organization encourages all of us to join that. And I feel like the organization as a whole, for those of us that are small business individuals, it's almost segregationist, if you will, your structure, it's, it's right there on page one. It's a downtown development council, and that would be something that I think that PACE, if you are taking revenue from all areas of our community, and you are a business-minded organization, you have to include everyone. You have to include the east, the west, the north, and the south. That would be a suggestion to you.
I think as we set it up, the intention is to have all of the businesses represented and for benefit from specifically the Business Development Council. There is a council down at Lake for the downtown, because that is an element to our community as well. But between the two, there are a lot of opportunities, and there are opportunities for everyone to jump on a council and to lend expertise or to express concerns, and, you know, figure that out as a group. So I hope you do feel invited to do that as a business owner.
Like the mayor said earlier about the Washington trip, and having to, I, I feel that as an organization, it's the organization's responsibility to come to the businesses and say, how can we support you? It shouldn't be my responsibility to say, Karen, I need to talk to you about this or that. I mean, you, you should be taking the temperature of the, the health of businesses in all areas of our community. You're the one that should, that should be taking that temperature. Like Mayor said, you should be setting up the trip. Particularly for your members. So, I'm, I'm just telling you what different business people have come to me as a representative of the board. The other thing, it's good information for you to have.
You know, Karen, I know you're just the spokesperson for your organization, right? So I feel a little sorry for you right now, but as we approach these budget meetings next week, I think it would be really beneficial for you or someone from your organization or your board members. You know, as I read through this presentation, my feeling is this is nothing more than a work report of ninety percent of the projects that city staff has started or led from some point. As I'm walking through this thing, I'm sitting here asking myself, if I could pick in here something that, that PACE specifically started on its own, from their own grassroots initiative? And, and so, if I, I could be missing it, but, but to me, that's something that this body needs to understand, because the feeling for myself, I don't want to speak for anyone else, is that this is just a lot of regurgitation of things that we already know about, that we're already working on, or that city staff is already working on. So as we've expressed in the past, the heartburn of spending thirty thousand dollars has not gotten any easier for us this year, I don't feel like. You know, when I, when I talk to some of your board members and they tell me about this great program where they're identifying the strategy to use LMI and how that should work, I, I stand back on my heels and think, well, that's not something that, that we as a community determine. That's a, that's a process that's decided, you know, in, in Washington and other places like that. So I, I'm curious why those committees are spending time rehashing policies that they cannot influence. So, so that's one thing that I would like a little clarity, you know, maybe from someone in your organization. You know, over the, this past twelve months, I've had, I've been really blessed to get to lead a small manufacturing company here in town, and as I listen to you talk about talent development and small business needs and land acquisition and all these things, I think to myself, man, you know, this company's been in this town for sixty-five years, and in the last twelve months, I haven't heard from one person in any of these committees talking to us about what PACE can bring to us, other than the, the letter I got in the mail asking us to be a member. And so, that, that kind of thing resonates in my mind when I sit here and think about how other businesses feel in this town that, that aren't located downtown or aren't anchored on one end of this community. So I would just encourage you to share with your boards that they need to get outside of the box and stand on their own a little bit. The Greater Des Moines Partnership is great for Greater Des Moines, but, but I hear that all the time, well, we're working with Greater Des Moines Partnership, or, I don't care what they're doing, because it's not affecting us directly. I, I would love to be able to sit at one of these budget meetings next week and say, you know what, guys and ladies, we should do it, because here are the five things that PACE and their organizations did on their own. They didn't, Laylee came to the table. The table didn't go to Laylee and say, hey, let us help you find land. That, that's nothing new. So, again, I know you're just spokesperson for your committees, and so I apologize for taking it out on you, but, but those are the kind of things that if you really expect the city to pay thirty thousand dollars again this year, that we need some clarity too. And if we're not at a level where we can know about some of these developers that are inquiring about wanting to make significant contributions to the community, who will also be asking for significant contributions financially, then that's a problem. And, and we need to figure that out as well. So I'll also get off my soapbox now, but.
Well, I'll also follow that up with, some of the things we do are intangible, but very important to the community and to our employers. Workforce recruitment is huge. We need to assist them and do what we can. Finding out if we're a welcoming community, because they need to bring in talent and what are our pinch points, is important, and that wouldn't happen unless we let that effort.
So give us an example of a tangible recruitment tool that you have come to the table with that works.
Virtual recruiters, we're just getting into. The Pella Talent Pipeline, we are just kicking off.
So how many people have we been able to glean from those two tools?
That's something that we're not able to put another on unless we would pull every company and they would be able to give us that information.
But surely they would be able to say, Ramiro Pelicorp should be able to say, hey, you know what, Karen, that, that tool is great, we've been able to hire three people from that. I can't imagine, I mean, they have staffs of people that hire people. So we don't have that information?
It's hard to get, but I can tell you from the one career fair that we did, we do have three hires, and the only reason we do know that are from people we've chatted with and followed up with. It's not information that the companies do want to share. That's nothing bad on them, that is their right to protect that information.
You may want to just send out a note to them and just say, hey, we did this, was it effective? Did you find great leads? I mean, that's, that's all we're asking for, is to say, show us some success, other than just say, we're planning for more, and we're looking at that, and we're looking at this, and we're doing this. It just sounds like a whole bunch of gobbledegook talk with no success, and oh, by the way, I need another thirty grand.
Well, here's what I will challenge you to do, is to attend any one of our council meetings, where we do have representatives from businesses that are working on this and do think it is very important to their work and their success here. I know you don't always see that, and it's not something that we're shouting from the rooftops, well, we did this. It's more they support the community, because if we live together, the whole community lives.
Any other comments?
Karen, of the tasks that PACE has been given to perform, which area do you feel is the weakest and needs the most work?
The area that I think needs the most work, not because it's the weakest, because it's the hardest, is workforce recruitment. And that's universal in the state of Iowa and in many places. Recruiting talent, especially- Recruiting talent, especially to rural Midwest, is tough. We have great jobs. We need housing, we're working on that. You know, childcare sometimes can be a barrier. But really giving people to look at rural Iowa, when right now metro living is definitely a trend, is an uphill battle, but it's important, we're going to work on.
So what has PACE done to make us stand out or think outside of the box or do something unique that puts us in front of the line of every other community? You say it's statewide, actually, I think it's nationwide. But what has PACE done to really help us as business people look for help other than a video conference, fairs you talked about? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm searching here, Karen. What? Talk.
One of the things that we are hearing from the companies that we are addressing is really getting our housing order sorted. Childcare needs, they have people turn down jobs because of the challenge of finding childcare. Housing, obviously. We are working with them on these career fairs. That was actually one of the initiatives that we all came together because they do feel they're effective. We've only done two. And the desire to really do the Big Ten, Big Twelve was that I think. Pelicorp, Ramir, has done some of those before and find them effective. So we're going to continue to help them with that. Positioning ourselves in the recruitment process has been very successful. Running our Pellet Pellet program really assists companies with turnover. So as part of the interview process, the candidates go on tours with our staff of the community to take a look at not only where they're going to work, but where they're going to live. As a recruitment and retention tool, that has been very important. And that is something very specific and key to our community and to our office. So those are just a couple of examples there where we are partnering with local industry to really tackle those challenges. We can't do it alone, we do need it. And we do work with the Greater Des Moines Partnership because they look also at feeder lines for either foreign-born or from coast. How can we break into some of those communities? How can we utilize the underrepresented populations for reskilling? Those are definitely things that we can have them assist with as well and leverage some of their influence and their reach in those markets.
Anyone else? Thank you. I know that's been difficult. Appreciate all of your efforts and all the information that you brought up. And as Tony said, it would be awesome to have. I'm sure Mike will be able to tell you what might be going through his buddy to where we're going to talk about that, but it would be good to come to that, have a representative there and also come loaded with some of those successes and some hard numbers and says, "This wouldn't happen without us" or "This is what we were involved in" or whatever. Because those are the kind of things that we need to know in order to feel good about putting another thirty thousand dollars on the table where there's nine more groups lined up behind you that would love to have a piece of that. So, thank you.
I appreciate everything you do as well. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to resolutions number one. Resolution number fifty-nine forty-six entails a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Clinker and Associates for engineering services associated with the Tull Cabin Learning Walkway project. Mike, can you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big work for the presentation on the side. As the mayor said, with this resolution, we do approve a professional services agreement with Clinker and Associates, excuse me, for the Tull Cabin Learning Walk project. Now, as background on this, the Pellet City Council approved the partnership with its board of public trust on November twentieth. And the partnership was expressly created for this project. And specifically, as we said, the contract of agreement was the Great Learning Walk, which the goal is, is to link the Tull Cabin and the Sunken Gardens park using an existing, existing vacant alleyway. We have a map of the alleyway here, very short as well. Now, as council is also aware, we closed the agreement this evening with our partnership with the historic Pellet Trust. But the agreement calls for, it's at a hundred percent of the project cost, construction cost of the project to be funded by the historic Pellet Trust. City would own the project and we would actually maintain the project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Court. Now, as far as the overall cost of it, we have listed here the various components from the agreement. Total agreement here is just shy of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the council wore to approve this resolution this evening. We have listed up here the intended timeline for the project. It will be kickoff meeting on February eleventh. And ultimately, we'd be looking at having final construction documents completed by April fifteenth of this year. That would put us in line to hold a bid meeting soon after April fifteenth of the project, which allows summer and fall construction of the learning walk. Now, with this to give going up to speed, Sunken Gardens is located right here. Lincoln Street is down here. And the Tull Cabin is right over here. And the vacated alleyway that we're talking about constructing, the historic or the learning walk, is located right in here. So...
That's it?
That's it. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. We have to have any answering questions the mayor and council may have on the side.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
Some of them.
Okay, I heard Bacho, but it's more a ski dump. You were louder than Bruce, he's closer, how's that? Any discussion?
Is it just a concrete sidewalk? Is that what it's going to be or is it going to be?
It's a trail that's more, more of a natural trail with, it's not necessarily wood chips, but, or something.
It's, it's a little bit unclear. I think the intent is to have something with a historic feel to it, but yet have good ADA compliance and that kind of thing. Engineering people, they've actually bring some background. Clinker brings some nice background of that. So we're here to hear what options they bring to it. Cobblestone? But either that or mud, what do you want for the eighteen fifty?
Any other comments?
That's R. twenty-five, very great.
No.
No.
It's theirs.
This is just the agreement, so...
A hundred percent is a hundred percent.
Right. Let's emphasize that, right?
Yo, can we make that fifty instead of twenty-five?
I mean, just, just out of kindness of your heart.
There's no kindness in here.
Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close, no, clerk call or roll.
Bacho?
Yes.
Eba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Reiner Horse?
Yes.
Dan Stranland?
Yes.
On to resolution number fifty-nine forty-seven. It's entitled the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a consent to collateral assignment of economic development grants from Harvest Investments LLC to Central State Bank. Mike, can you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And as the mayor said, with this resolution, we approve and authorize the execution of a consent collateral agreement between the city of Pellet, Harvest Investments, and Central State Bank. Now, as background on this project, as the council is aware, in two thousand and eighteen, the city of Pellet approved an economic development agreement with Harvest Investments. Build a proposed development that's located approximately twelve hundred feet south of Boslon Drive. If you better orientate everyone, you have a map of the proposed development that we have right here. Boslon Drive is located right up here. What we have is hole number seventeen and eighteen of Boslon Drive. Of course, right here, hole number one is right over here. Hole number two is right here. Pellet Street is being proposed down here. And what we have is the housing cooperative project by Harvest Investments. This is a forty-one unit housing cooperative project. And ten of the projects is for folks that are fifty-five years in the older. They're looking at right size, their living means. Really caters to that development. And in addition, we have approximately ten single-family home lots out here that will be very similar to the Boslon development. Overall, total housing in the proposed development that was approved to the PUD and development agreement, fifty-one housing units. Estimated cost to construct the housing cooperative project is just shy of thirteen million dollars. Now, let's go ahead, please, Court. Now, in order to construct the project, we pointed to some investments that Harvest Investment would have to make. Now, the cost of the investment is one of the biggest impediments to housing that we have in the city, in particular in new sites like this. It's the cost of public infrastructure. When you look at the previous slides and the map, the slides, the cost of the public infrastructure, when we're talking about the streets, the water mains, sanitary sewer mains, was estimated to cost two point one million dollars. When those streets are finally constructed and the final plaid is approved for the development, the streets, the water mains, sanitary sewer mains will be dedicated to the city of Pellet in accordance with plans and specifications for the project on here. In other words, they will be built to city standards and ultimately dedicated to the city of Pellet, owned by the city of Pellet. What we approved with the development agreement was a rebate over the next fifteen years, two point one million dollars for the cost of the public infrastructures from new taxes from the development, property taxes from the development. So once the housing cooperative project is built, once it is owned or built on it, we would collect the rebate taxes. If we received two point one million dollars over the next fifteen years in property taxes from the development, we'll rebate two point one million dollars in support of the cost of the public infrastructure. Now, where this agreement comes into play, in our economic development agreement, the developer had the right to sign economic development grants. And usually, this is a mechanism developers do, is assigning the grants to banks and finance projects. And that's what's being proposed this evening. They have the right, under the agreement, to sign the grants to the party of their chosen, Central State Bank. Our legal counsel has looked at the consent agreement they have right here and has reviewed, and they are recommending approval this evening as they believe it is in accordance with the terms of the development agreement. So what this simply does is assigns the rights, Harvest Investment, and Economic Development, to sign the grants to Central State Bank. Or this is a right that the developer has under the development agreement. So let's go ahead, please, Court.
That's it.
Okay. So, so in essence, what we're saying is, and not what's being proposed, is Harvest Investments is assigning their rights to the economic development grants to Central State Bank. This is fairly common in the development business and it uses a mechanism to finance economic development projects. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, moving on to answering questions the mayor and council may have on the side.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
Some of them.
Peterson? It's for Bacho, man? Discussion? I have a question, Mike, just to make, just to clarify. There will be no economic development incentives until the construction begins or until the construction is complete, is that correct?
Correct. Before any grants are paid, what has to happen, there's the city's development grant. Court, we'll go back to the map, please. We have a condition precedent that says the developer will build these streets right here. And they'll dedicate to the city of Pellet and they'll be built to city standards. And they have to be accepted by the city of Pellet, that's condition number one. The second condition in the development agreement is the developer doesn't receive anything unless there's property taxes collected from the development. This is above and beyond the base value that's set right now. If you were to go out there right now, or actually wanted to prove it was an open field. And so whatever that base ag value was at that time, that's frozen in time. And so on the incremental value that gets built on there that will rebate it, so the developer actually has to build the project. We have to receive taxes before the development grants are, are, are given to the developer. And what the developer's simply doing is they're assigning the rights to those grants to Central State Bank. And so that's all, all that's at. It doesn't increase the city's liability, it's a right the developer has under the development agreement, we simply have to approve it. And the consent agreement, the big thing is, is we needed to make sure that it's in accordance with the terms of the development agreement. This was reviewed by our attorneys at the Allers Law Firm, they believe it is.
Very good, thank you. Just briefly, I have a question I had, Mike. That base is set as ag ground?
Well, it, it is. When, before the project started, this had an assessed valuation on this thirty acres out here. That's frozen in time. That, that value continues to go to the taxing authorities. So what we're talking about, the rebates, are only the increased valuation from this point forward. So as the new valuations get built on it, property taxes, those would be the property taxes that would be rebated back to the developer for the cost of infrastructure that they had to build to the city standards that they dedicated to the city.
Who actually sets that base value?
Well, that's set in the terms of the development agreement. What the terms of the development agreement says is, on collection of this, when we set up the urban renewal area and establish our plan, the base value gets set at that point in time on it. So the minute that the urban renewal area and we start, like, and we certify debt on this, which means the developer would have had to build the infrastructure, dedicate the city of Pellet, and then the minute they start building, let's say the housing cooperative project gets built and we start, we believe we're going to receive property taxes, that's the time we, we, we all of a sudden will cover debt on it and that's the time we would certify on it. And that's when the base value would be set. That was clear as mine, but the...
Well, no, it is. I understand the process, but I was, you know, that piece of land, if you went out and bought it, would be worth a whole lot more than an eighty-acre farm out somewhere, just because it's where it's at. So I was wondering how that was, but that will be set at the time by the entities involved.
It's all based on the assessed value of the property. So that, that's frozen. And so what we're talking about, when you're talking about rebates, it's the incremental value on it. So long for a short, the developer has to build it to receive anything.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please, yes. Close, no, clerk call or roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bacho?
Yes.
Reiner Horse?
Yes.
Dan Stranland?
Yes.
Eba?
Yes.
Deon?
Resolution number fifty-nine forty-eight. It's entitled the resolution of the city of Pellet council approving the final plat of Boss Ridge subdivision phase one. Mike, can you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What we have this evening is the final plat of phase one of the Boss Ridge subdivision. Now, the Boss Ridge subdivision of Bucks County Highway T-15, Boslon Drive is located right down here. Holes number four and five of Boslon Drive, of course, are located right over here. And overall, this is approximately forty-three lot residential subdivision that was approved by the Pellet City Council in two thousand and eighteen. What we are considering approving this evening would be the final plat for lots one through eleven. So it's right up here, it's the yellow highlighted area. It was being proposed to the final plat. The developer's still working on the infrastructure for the rest of remaining development and they anticipate that that should be completed, at least the infrastructure-wise, by mid-year of two thousand and nineteen as intended timeframe. The reason they're proposing a final plat now is they have interest in these lots. And by accepting this component or approving this portion of the final plat, this would allow them to actually start selling lots just for the yellow area that we have down here within here, these eleven lots, where the infrastructure is complete. So let's go ahead, please, Court. Now, the terms are the guidelines that we need to follow improving final plats is we need to make sure this evening, the final plaid is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, this as well. And as council is aware, when we talk about, there's two types of plats. The preliminary plat is the overall game plan, the infrastructure required for developments that was approved by the Pellet City Council in two thousand and eighteen. Final plats are the final documents that are reported with the board's office and it's used for the transfer of land. And oftentimes, they don't include the infrastructure on the details of the infrastructure on it as well. So what we need to make sure is that the preliminary or the final plat is in accordance with the preliminary plat or the overall game plan that was approved by the Pellet City Council. Now, let's go ahead, please, Court. Okay. Now, as far as our review this evening, we believe the final plat needs to meet the minimum requirement of zoning ordinance and also meets the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance. In addition, we spent an extensive amount of time in two thousand and eighteen talking about this subdivision and setting up urban rules in tandem to the comprehensive plan. And we feel that the plat is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan as well. Now, based upon these findings, we are recommending approval this evening in the final plat, which would also accept the infrastructure for the development as well. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Danny, on this, we have about seven hundred and fifty linear feet of city street. We're going to be accepting this evening, council through this resolution, nine hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer mains, another seven hundred and fifty feet of water mains, and approximately four hundred feet of storm sewer. That engineer for the project has, has certified that they were built in accordance with city standards as well. So with that, again, what this approval is, is our place of phase one is the lot of lots, the forty-three lot residential subdivisions of Boss Ridge. The remaining infrastructure for the development is scheduled to be completed by mid-year this year as well. So this is just phase one and this would allow them to start selling lots within the development, just for this first phase, which we did these eleven lots on the big board. And finally, Mr. Mayor, it is important to know that the planning is under consideration as well as the final plaid of fifteen or twenty, that we need immediately approve it, so.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval? Eba? Port Deon? Discussion?
Does that fall in our electric, Nate?
Yes.
It does.
Correct.
All the utilities are in and ready to rock and roll?
Enough to feed those lots and that plat.
Danny, we got room to shovel snow or anything down in there? Hopefully by next year, they'll have the other section open where they're not getting any building.
We will. This year, but... Three-point turn back in that cul-de-sac.
Back in that cul-de-sac, you'll be able to get around in there.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please, yes. Close, no, clerk call or roll.
Eba?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Bacho?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to ordinances. Ordinance number nine fifty-four, entitled, "Anamending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending a PUD Plan for the Property Located at 413 Main Street, City of Pella, Marion County, Marion County, Iowa." This is the second reading. Mike, can you explain, please?
As I said, Mr. Mayor, and as the mayor said, with this amendment, this is rather proposed ordinance for amending zoning regulations and zoning enforcement, which is previously approved from the former Wester School site. This request, or this amendment, is being requested by already key buildings. And the orientator here on the map that we're showing up on the big board is the former Wester School site, and the amending is being executed here. The east street is over here. First Baptist Church is right here, and the school is the former school site is right here. The diagram that you see up on the big board is actually exhibit number one of the PUD, for states of development, which shall be in accordance with what's shown up here on the big board. Now, ultimately, when we talk about the Wester School site, we're talking about approximately a forty-two-lot residential subdivision or townhome condominium development. The purpose of this development would be a very high-end condominium development. It's really intended to be a showcase development for southeast Iowa, in fact, the state of Iowa as well. The reason for the amendment is when we approved this last year, at the time, the developer intended to develop all of the portion of the project under one ownership here. So, how the PUD was set up was to approve it via site plan. Since that time, when they've talked to their financial institutions, they believe it would be advantageous for them to be able to market the financing of the townhomes in a certain way that would require them to have individual lot lines for the townhome portion of the development. What that's gonna require is to further subdivide this three-acre parcel of the Wester School site down. Well, since we were notified of this after the PUD was approved, there are certain elements that didn't comply with the city's zoning ordinance, and that's what we're hoping to address through this amendment this evening. So, with that, Cory, let's go ahead. Related, we have two items here with it, and this is the big one when we talk about the subdivision. There is a portion of the bend unit development, when they went through their subdivision or their proposed subdivision, that did not comply with the city's three-yard setback, which is twenty feet under the PUD. What's being amended is to reduce that from twenty feet to zero feet, just within the development. We really think this is more or less a housekeeping item. We would have known at the get-go with the proposed project that they intended to subdivide this and could have addressed this. This would have been included with the original PUD amendment. Second item includes a portion of existing alleyway, which was recently vacated by the City of Pella on this. And so, if we can go back to the map, Cory, we had a small section of alleyway that's somewhere right here in this vicinity that was owned previously by the City of Pella, that was vacated by the Pella City Council on this. And what's included is that small section of alleyway. You can almost see it. It's right here. Here's about a twenty-foot section of alleyway. That's just included in the legal description. So, those are the two items under the PUD ordinance. But the long story short is, the developer decided to subdivide the property after the PUD was previously through by subdividing it crosswise with the city's zoning ordinance on the rear yard setback. We need a minor adjustment on the rear yard setback to comply with the city's zoning ordinance. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation. It is important to note that the finding that zoning commission unanimously approved this amendment after January seventh. So, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this particular item.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Skeba?
Yes.
Or Skeba? Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Yep.
Please say.
Is there any, what are they gonna do, the second part of it? Is there any talk of when?
What's that?
Well, they're basically splitting the development, correct? Is there any talk of when that, the rest of it, might be completed?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'm not, I don't have a month of time in my head as far as the exact timeline, but I'll be happy to give that to you, thanks, to you, for your counsel.
I mean, we're not talking years, are we?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, because I just can't recall. It's in the city's development agreement on the exact timeline when phase two has to be done. And it is relatively soon. And if I throw out a date, it will be wrong. So, I'd rather be right on it than get that to you. So...
That's not necessary, Mike. I was just wondering if this was happening forthright?
It will be happening very, very soon. In fact, I think our development agreement requires demolition of Wester School building by the spring of next year on it. So, I can safely say that, but the rest of the dates I'm a little bit hazy on right now. So...
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call a roll.
Deon?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bacho?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You need to move.
Is there any?
That's been requested by the developers.
Set aside the rules, waive the rule.
Motion to waive the rules and set aside the third and final reading by Bacho?
Support.
Support Peterson? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call a roll.
Bacho?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt by Bacho? Support Skeba? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call a roll.
Bacho?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Motion carried. Move on to claims. Abstract to bill number twenty twenty-four, do I hear a motion for approval?
Approve and issue warrants.
Motion to approve and issue warrants by Skeba?
Support.
Support Dan Straylin. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call a roll.
Skeba?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Bacho?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Peterson?
Motion carried. We'll move on to other business, public forum. Do any council members have any other business to bring forward at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I do. Councilmember Rainer Horst and I had a great opportunity last Thursday to visit with forty residents at Fairhaven about things that they find important in the community. And it was very, it was a very good opportunity for us to share some perspective and get theirs, more importantly. Community Center was a big deal to them. I'm chuckling because we were talking about that earlier. That, surprisingly, to me anyway, that came up from a couple different folks and just the value they see in it. They like walking there and just some of the other programming. They value the opportunity to go to the plays and some of the Union Street Players, things that go on there. So, it was a great opportunity to get out and listen to a group of folks that maybe don't always get heard. So, it was a great opportunity for us.
They keep you on your toes. They know their politics.
And they don't mind calling a little BS now and then.
Oh, boy. Great way to prepare for a political debate, honestly. There was one takeaway that I did have from that. There was a lady, and we were also talking about needing to attract young talent and keep young talent in our community. And she piped up and felt very emotional and very strong about keeping the community center in this center of the community. And she said, "All I hear is about keeping all of, attracting this young talent and keeping them in Pella." And she said, "What about those of us that did stay? And what about those of us that did work at Pella Corp. in Vermeer for thirty-plus years? I think we deserve something too," meaning that they deserve to have the ability to walk to..." She was literally wheelchair-bound. And so, she wanted to have the opportunity to ascertain the community center from that mode of transportation, quite humbly, quite humbly.
Thank you for making the time to do that. That's awesome.
Well, Harold doesn't know it, but we did offer him up for the next round.
You're on deck. All right. Awesome.
One other thing. Anybody have been contacted about, "Now that we have that light on exit forty, boy, do we need a light on exit forty-two." So, I'll just throw that out.
That's a DOT thing.
Oh, I know it is. But I don't know if anybody else has been tapped with that one.
I've not heard anything.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, we drive red teachers to hit with that one.
Any other comments?
I'll throw one in. It's been weighing on me here. Three instances that I'm aware of where people have come up with kind of unique, novel ideas of what to do with spaces around the town, and they've run up against ordinance laws every time. I think it's time to take a look at some of these ordinances and see if they actually match the world we live in today.
Interesting. Yeah, I've been hit with that one, too.
It'd be nice to be on the front end of that, rather than have a reactionary on the back end. Nobody likes to be in that situation every time.
And we want to accommodate people.
Absolutely.
And so, it's no waste of funds, not stamps, and that's what's written in the book. Maybe we ought to take a look.
And some of them are written in old ink, right, Manny? We've seen that before in the original logs. Have you guys ever seen those, the original books of the minutes and stuff from the city council meeting? If you haven't seen it, everybody, they're, they do exist, and we show them to the fourth graders, third and fourth graders from Pella Christian every spring. They come in, and we do a mock council meeting, and we show them the book.
That's a big city hall.
And they're here. We said that we have a regular council meeting here with the kids. It's an awesome experience.
That's a fun day.
It's one of my favorite days as mayor.
That's cool.
Spend the morning with the kids. It's great. It's awesome. The city clerk records and the city council minutes, I think you're referring to, they're at the city hall.
They are. They're handwritten from the eighteen hundreds.
They're awesome.
Coming back around.
If you want to see them, they're there. They're awesome.
Some of those in Dutch? No, they're all English?
No, they're all English.
Mike, how are they stored?
One of the old times. And I don't know if it's true, but if you look way back, the council would be Dutch, but the mayor was always English-speaking. So, nobody could blow anything by him because they didn't understand it well enough. That property is going like this.
How are they stored? I'm worried about archiving, deterioration, fire damage.
I'm gonna turn it over to the record.
They are very safely secured in the vault, and they are on archival papers. So, they're in very good shape.
Good, good.
And we, I still use them on minutes today. They're on archival papers.